I do not have a chair's report.
Oh, here we go.
We have warrants today?
No, we don't.
We do not have any warrants today, so that means we probably don't have any land item transfers?
No.
Got it. Review to approve minutes, any?
No minutes.
No minutes.
Great.
We do have a superintendent's report.
Excellent.
I wanted to let everyone to know that we had a nice turnout, not the seventy-five that signed up, but we had a nice turnout on Saturday to tour the building. And so we'll just continue to make opportunities available to folks. I know we got an email today, I think it was an email, wasn't it, Mrs. Peterson, of a family that really wanted to see the building, but they hadn't been able to get on to one of the Saturday tours. And they work during the work week, so we're certainly invited them to join us. This Saturday, we have one hundred people signed up. We'll see how many are there at eight-thirty. And we have some student volunteers who will be assisting us again. And Mr. Tim Normandin, as well as Mistress Bandafino and Mr. Mackin and myself will be there to give some tours. And so we'll have at least, keep the groups about twenty-five each if everybody shows up. If fewer than that show up, then the tour groups will be a little smaller, and that's always a little easier for people to ask questions and talk about the building and everything. But we're so pleased that so many individuals and families have signed up to come join us for those tours. They're happening on Saturdays through, not every single Saturday, so please call and check, as well as Thursdays, and pretty regularly on Thursdays at eight-thirty in the morning as well. So, starting next Thursday, the fourteenth. Also, on the thirteenth and fourteenth, please remember that the playground, it's a community build, and there's still some availability of folks to fill in some slots for. So if you have any time, particularly, I think, Thursday, the fourteenth, there was a need to have more individuals come out and help us. So, we sent that out to everybody today, just encouraging folks that if they had a couple hours on either one of those days to please join us. Here's a little informational piece that we put together that we are just making available to those touring the building, just to give them a better idea of what the lay of the land is and a few facts, some fun facts on the back. Nothing, nothing that's not out there in some form, but just a little sheet to help orientate them to how the school's laid out and everything. I wanted to give a personnel update. We're disappointed, but certainly wish Ms. Abby Anderson well, as she and her family leave our community heading for the North Shore. And, of course, Ms. Anderson was a physical education teacher at Turkey Hill, then elementary school. She would have been our middle school. She was continuing to the middle school as a physical education teacher, but that position is posted at this point in time. We also have not had the opportunity to fill some of our specialist positions. We had some that were kind of an interesting combination of art and maybe doing some technology as well. We're splitting those apart and doing those as part-time postings at this point in time. We had some qualified candidates for that. Our top candidate, however, decided not to relocate to Central Mass. And so we just are continuing to find high-quality licensed teachers in order to provide those, that important instructional component to all our students. So I'll keep everybody posted on that. Jeff Dionne, who lives here in our community, has been appointed to the guidance position that was open when Mr. David Bevien moved from our community. And Jennifer Rios has been appointed as the middle school part-time physical education teacher, that position that we had posted due to increased enrollment. So Ms. Rios will be taking that position. She's been teaching at the Parker Charter School. Her undergraduate is in degrees in biology and then wellness, and she's a personal trainer as well, was part of what she did along the way. I was very excited to talk to her. I was particularly interested in the things that she had to say around how they're using some of the technology to enhance wellness in students. You know, things like the Fitbit, which, no, we're not suggesting that all students buy a Fitbit, but there are different kinds of devices that I know we've hired, we've purchased at the high school in order to help students understand that notion of wellness. One of the interesting concepts that I thought that she brought is a recognition now with this technology that some of the students that may be working the hardest towards physical fitness and everything are not necessarily the ones that we are seeing heavily participating in other kinds of activities. And how important that feedback and encouragement is for students that might not be engaged in other kinds of extracurricular sporting events and things. So, we always appreciate the work of all our physical education teachers rounding that into health and wellness kinds of concepts. And Mr. Dionne comes to us with a rich background in providing guidance services to students, and also has been an assistant principal during his time as an educator. So, we welcome him. And Mr. Dionne, he and his family have lived here in Lunenburg for some time, so we welcome him. I also wanted to let everyone know that we've updated our student information system, the parent interface package with it, and that, we have found, is more compatible than our prior system with the Power Schools. It's an interface that was developed specifically for Power School, so the systems talk to themselves a lot better, and I think our parents will find it more user-friendly than the one that we were using. So we're going to go about making sure that parents are aware that we need to update all the information that we have on our students, making sure we have current addresses, phone numbers, contact information. So, as we get into August, we'll start pushing that information out for everyone. But with the caveat that we now have a system that we feel will be even more user-friendly for our parents, and always appreciate them using the technology that's available. And if you don't have that technology at home, we are making arrangements to make sure it's available, that if you come into school, we can put you on a device and you can take care of that registration in that fashion as well. So, Mr. Londa wanted me to share with everyone that the, moving forward with the asbestos abatement in those important areas where the flooring has started to wear thin, and it's an area that we need to keep maintaining. Also, the teacher lunchroom, that will be abated, the flooring in that will be abated, and then new flooring put in. The transite panels that were damaged on the end of the building, those will be replaced. The building signage, Turkey Hill Elementary School, that has been ordered and will be going up. The flashing lights that we talked about, making sure that they get put in place, you know those weren't part of the project, so those will be going in over the next, course of the next four weeks. The portico, I was down at the primary today. The workers have been out there really grinding off all of that old paint that had started to chip and peel from the steel beams, and then they'll be repainting that. We had talked about that, through the capital plan, the phone and the intercom system at Turkey Hill Elementary School, that's underway in terms of the work being done over there. I mentioned our tours. Mr. Londa also asked me to remind everyone that the engineering is taking place with select energy because there's a letter of intent on that power purchasing agreement, the solar panels on the new building, the middle high school. He has talked to the designers, the engineers, about our concerns, the concerns expressed by the committee at the last time in terms of the panels being in those valleys. So there's thirty-one panels that are impacted by that, and they're looking for other locations for that. And just want to encourage the committee to make sure that if there's any other concerns that you saw with that original drawing that we put out there, that we get those communicated to the engineers as they continue to work on finalizing this project. August eighth is the town meeting related to both this power purchasing agreement as well as the net mediating agreement. So, just remind everyone of those. So, that's where we're at this summer. Our English Language Arts Task Force has been busy working. Our Social Studies Task Force will be back in August finalizing their work. And so we'll have those documents ready to bring to the committee that have been updates of our curriculum. It's the first time in several years, this is, it's been over four years since we've had the opportunity to update the curriculum, given where we've been financially. And it's really great to have that forty S money that's coming in that's supporting all that curriculum adoption that is helping us update the instructional materials as well. So, that's the superintendent's report for tonight.
Okay, thank you. School committee report. I attended the weekly construction meeting again today, which is the ninety-seventh construction meeting. We only got a couple more to one hundred. The, in terms of the new middle high school, they report that eighty percent of the punch list has been completed up till now. The goal had been to make sure that one hundred percent of the punch list was taken care of by the end of the month, so they're making good progress on that. The additional cooling is underway at the new school for the classrooms themselves. It's going very well. Given the fairly dry weather, they've been able to work all the way through, to the point where they expect the condensers to be installed next week, and the startup to happen the week of July the twenty-fifth, which is a little bit ahead of schedule, but what that does is it buys us a couple of weeks for balancing and making sure that, you know, the system is, you know, not too cool or not too hot. In the old building, the abatement in the southeast wing has begun. The gym has been completed for the abatement, and the tear-down should begin next week.
Tear down at the gym?
Just tear down to the gym.
Just okay.
As I said in the previous meetings, the way that they're handling the project is they're doing the gym, the southeast wing, and then that third wing. As they abate one piece, they tear it down. So by the time they're done tearing down the gym, then they'll tear down the southeast wing, but, so that'll go that way, to the point where by the first week of August, you'll drive on Massachusetts Avenue and see nothing but the new school.
People cannot wait to see this. Very exciting.
So that will hap, they'll see that the first week of August. Site prep has started for the Phase Two site work, including they removed the old tennis courts.
They were hideous.
In terms of the new maintenance garage, that, the structure's been completed, it's up. And they expect to pour the slab Friday or Monday, somewhere in there, depending on the weather, and so that will be complete by next week. And I believe that Mr. Londa is looking to move the equipment on or about the eighteenth. Let's see. Other details, the new electronic sign will be shipped at the end of July, will be operational before school starts. I don't know if I had reported at the last meeting, but we did have a discussion at the last school building committee meeting, that the Lunenburg Police Department is requesting a repeater system in the building because there are parts of the building that are not receiving clearly their signal. Now, under the codes, we, of course, put in a system for the fire department. There was no code-related requirement for a police repeater system on top of the fire repeater system. The chief has requested this. We are looking at the cost of that. The committee will then review that as to whether that change order will be issued. You know, be, obviously, there are safe, life safety issues that are there. I wish that we had been thoughtfully approached about it earlier than we are, but here we are, and we have to deal with it. It wasn't until the building was completed that you would know that that was a problem. So, that discussion will continue at next week's construction meeting, which is scheduled for July the eleventh at six-thirty at TCP. Any questions? Public comment? If I could make just a quick public comment to mention? Yeah. The town is sponsoring a volunteer appreciation barbecue, July the twenty-sixth, five to seven at Eagle House. We are all invited. I plan on attending. It's a great opportunity to talk with other people and other committees and put faces to names, and it's always been a fun event. So I'd hope everybody would have the opportunity to join us. Any other comment from the board?
Just a quick question. Were we going to start considering public comment to be placed earlier in the...
This is where we place it earlier.
Okay, this was the earlier, okay.
Because there'll be one earlier, and there'll be one later.
Okay, got it.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
The only other question I had, do we have a student rep yet, or no?
They're going to decide at the beginning of the school year?
Okay.
Okay. New business?
I provided a draft of the goals for FY seventeen, the superintendent's goals for FY seventeen. I made available to you two out of three of the categories. The district improvement goal, I suggested that we wait, pending conversation about the direction that the school committee is going to go with regard to the district improvement plan, which has virtually been completed at this point in time. I know we've had conversation about a strategic planning process to be taking place, as well as consultants that help look at that in a little different fashion in terms of goal setting. So, we have that set up for August tenth, a workshop around talking about the school committee goals for next year. So I just respectfully submitted that there are some topics we've talked about, strategic planning, community, communication and community engagement is always one that we seek to continuously improve upon. Social-emotional learning has been a topic that we've discussed a great deal, and we'll need to determine if that's going to go into any district-wide plan. We have it contained in most of the building plans. I think if you reflect back upon the building, the individual school improvement plans, the social-emotional pieces were contained in each one of those. So there were just some notions that I put out there, but really feel that I'd like to wait to see the direction that the committee intends to take around the district improvement plan. We've suggested some areas of focus, obviously, but we can find to whom that. The other, the student learning goals, you know, it has been several years since we've had the opportunity, as I said before, to update the curriculum. The science, technology and engineering curriculum just this year was approved and updated by the state board in Massachusetts. So, the timing on that will be very good as that curriculum is being updated, has been updated. And so our curriculum task force that will be forming this year, as well as the mathematics task force, will be able to refer to those documents, or that document, in terms of our own update. And as I said earlier as well, the ti, it's really important that these updates be done before we continue to invest significant amounts of money in curriculum instructional materials that need updated. We want to make sure that what's being purchased is what we want and is based upon an updated curriculum. Under professional practice, I've upped the ante with regard to classroom visits. With the project being almost complete at this point in time, I'm very much looking forward to getting back into more classroom visits. I do those with directors as, as well as with the principals, and we have some protocols that we utilize for that. And it's always a pleasure to be in the classrooms, interacting with the students and the teachers as appropriate during my visits as well. So, this particular goal says that a minimum of four classrooms weekly with an average of, with an overall average of six per, per each week when we look at averaging things out. So, we tried to set that minimum threshold as well as getting the average moving up as, so those go in concert rather than an absolute number. And that's September twelfth through April thirtieth is the dates. We set April thirtieth just to make sure that we're able to report out to the school committee around my evaluation relative to these goals. So, that's an overview of what we're proposing at this time, and it's a draft. It's just some ideas that I've presented to you, and look forward to hearing your feedback to me.
So at this time, we're not taking action on this, we're just for your, for your information, for your review, thoughts, additions?
I was curious, how long are you, the visits in general, when you go to? Is it like a ten-minute walk-through, or is it sit-down?
It varies, but generally, it's about a ten-minute snapshot. There's times where I try to get in for a longer period of time. I haven't really tracked the time, they do vary. Sometimes it depends on the activity that's going on in the classroom. You know, one, I have read recently in one of the professional journals of superintendents that have adopted the schedule that a student has at the high school level, is what they were referring to and basically followed a student through the entire day. So you set aside the entire day and feel, experience what it's like to be a student in that particular building, which I thought was an interesting concept, and I was hoping maybe to try out that a couple times with our students. I think it'll be interesting to do, to try to get one of those in per building.
That does sound like an interesting approach.
And I can add that, yeah. I think that, that day-long kind of thing with one student, you know, you basically, or one, follow one student. So you're in one classroom at the elementary generally, and specials at the high school, you're in whatever that student's schedule is. Same with the middle school.
And I would say the only thing that comes to mind as I, you know, look at this goal is the equated, to equally be visiting all the schools. You know what I mean? And because there's such different things happening at the elementary level compared to the middle high school, and that's the only thing that I was thinking about as you...
And I can put that language in there, because in my mind, when I say four, that's at least one per building, but it doesn't say that explicitly.
Right.
So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you. We have no old business, now we come... Oh, sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure. On the draft, yes.
No, in old business.
Okay.
Little bit of a field update, because I have to admit, I was surprised that that was...
The turf.
Around the turf field.
Oh, sure.
That was, that was upsetting and surprising, and based on the last communication we had from A.D. McCullough, I was shocked that, you know, it's not happening.
Right. And I think...
And what was the plan, what, what parts of the plan, because I know you, you had just, you know, brought up that there's working on a plan, what's in place?
I think the town manager is just looking to make sure that the whole process is being followed in terms of vendors being utilized, making sure the engineering is appropriate with it. The town manager is basically directing this activity. Mr. McCullough is working and reporting directly to her, and that she's just asked for those kinds of things, had asked about the consultant, and David Warner was the consultant that worked on the project, and looking for agreements to be in place. And, you know, one of those agreements is our agreement with the Parks Department that we have submitted to them, I think it was January. We don't have that signed yet. I know they've been going through some reorganization. And wanting to have those agreements because the, that proposal was put in place with the assurances that groups would be paying certain amounts of money. And so I think they want to see those agreements in place before they make this financial commitment.
So what will that mean for our teams in the fall, and is this looking at a spring replacement?
I can't answer that. What it means for our teams in the fall is that if that field's not available to play on because of safety concerns, that's the first question I ask, then what are we going to do in terms of addressing that for our teams? Are we looking at practicing off? Are we doing some more transportation? Are we using other fields in town? That is something that Mr. McCullough, when he returns from his vacation, is going to be sitting down with me, and we're going to have a proposal around, because it does indeed appear that, that the field won't be done for the fall. And so we need to have a plan for what that's going to look like.
And, and we don't know yet whether we will utilize that field at all, or limited?
That's correct. I think, you know, the concerns about the replacement, we're always around safety, and that's the first thing I said to Mr. McCullough, is that if that field is not appropriate to play on, then we need to make sure that we're not playing on it, and we need another plan in place. So, that's what I've asked him to, to basically work with the Parks Department and anybody else that we need to engage in terms of the playability of that field, by people who know whether it's playable or not, and, and a plan if it's not.
So when do we hope to have an answer? You know, the athletic director's going to come back from vacation, you're going to meet with him. Just in terms of planning for the fall and planning the schedule of where we're...
Well, the schedule's set, so it would be, basically, the planning is what other fields are available. I think Mr. McCullough has already put in a request to the Parks around the use of Marshall Park for a couple of our teams, which we've done in the past as well.
By the next meeting, or by...
By the next meeting, I would, we would have, this, this is what we see as the solution to this new wrinkle in our fall sports.
And would, if this wrinkle involves more transportation, is that going to have to come out of the revolving fund for athletics? Do we have, or is that going to be determined?
If they're, that's what we'll have to determine. I think we're going to look for the low-cost alternative to this. And, you know, we just haven't had the, had the full conversation. I know the A.D.'s been thinking about this a lot, and so what we're going to do is problem-solve around it and come back to you with some options and proposals. So, thank you. I should have thought to bring that up, because I know that everyone was anticipating that that would be replaced. That certainly has been where everybody thought it was going to be.
When I read that, I was stunned.
But it does, you know, we, it is a big purchase, and we certainly don't argue making sure that it's done the right way.
I think some of this is from lessons learned from the first time the field was put in place, where there was, you know, it was a great volunteer effort, but it was a great volunteer effort. It wasn't, you know, necessarily done with a...
Plan.
Right. And I think that the, the lesson learned from that is that we have to have a solid plan in place to start. And I think it's wise that the, that the town manager took a look at it and said, let's make sure that we've got the, you know, everything sewed up before we, we start, you know, opening up the gate. And just to keep in mind, of course, that this is, Mr. McCullough is doing this as a matter of attempting to work with the, with the town. This is an actual town field, it's not a school field. And so, you know, Mr. McCullough is working at best to help coordinate it, and it was actually through the, through the work of Mr. McCullough that we, and Mr. Londa, that we had a plan at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Reports?
None.
None?
None.
It's summer.
Topics for future discussion? Topics for future discussion, anyone? I think we're going to beat last night's Board of Selectmen meeting. I turned it on, and all of a sudden, it was over. Then I will take a motion to adjourn. Some, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Liz.
Those are all set. This is my mail?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mackin.